Welcome to the League of Women Voters in District 203 General Holman School Candidate Forum for the Naperville Community Unit School District 203 Board. This event is being recorded. I am Susan Craig, Head President of the League of Women Voters of Naperville. The League is a nonpartisan organization. We do not support or oppose candidates for public office. You can rely on the League to present fair and civil candidate events where each candidate is allowed an equal chance to respond. Local elections typically have a much lower voter turnout than presidential or midterm elections. Yet it is the local elections that have real consequences in our day-to-day lives. In many ways, our local officials have the most impact on our quality of life. I hope that your attendance here tonight means that you are making more plan for how to cast your vote on or before Tuesday, April 4. In addition to watching candidate events live or recorded, you may also find candidate information on Vote411.org, our nonpartisan online voter guide. All candidates have been invited to respond to questions and their answers appear complete and unedited. A video of this candidate forum will be linked to Vote411. And now let me introduce our partner representative Emily Kozlowski, President of District 203 General Holman School.
Good evening. My name is Emily Kozlowski and I am the General Holman School President. General Holman School's mission is to encourage and facilitate a cooperative partnership among our students, parents, guardians, and district staff and administration to support and enhance the school experience of each student. General Holman School has worked with the League of Women Voters of Naperville to produce questions that will be asked of the candidates this evening. And now I would like to introduce our moderator Barb Lymanz.
Thank you Emily. Welcome to the Candidate Forum for Naperville Community Unit School District 203, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Naperville and Naperville School District Holman School. As Emily said, my name is Barb Lymanz, a member of the Wheaton League of Women Voters and your moderator for this evening. I live in West Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in the forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports or opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil civic discourse. Providing opportunities to meet candidates is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so voters can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. I would like to now invite the candidates to turn on their videos. Participating in tonight's forum for Naperville Community Unit School District 203 are candidate Ronald Amato, candidate Kristen Gerke, candidate Melissa Kelly Black, candidate Joseph Kosminski, and candidate Gilbert Wagner. The format for tonight is a forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts and their responses reflect their own views and opinions. The League of Women Voters is not responsible for the accuracy of statements made by the candidates. It is the responsibility of the public, news media, opposing candidates, to fact-check statements made by the candidates if necessary. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. All candidates attending tonight have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. These rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order with their one-minute opening statements. They will then alternate the order in which they answer questions for one minute. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement, continuing our alternating pattern. A member of the League will be acting as timer and I will enforce the time limits. Candidates, you will see a slide to let you know that you have 30 seconds, and then 15 seconds, and then stop. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish your sentence and move on to the next candidate. To ensure that the questions for tonight's forum represents a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters has reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness and to avoid duplication. Finally, I want to say how appreciative we are of the candidates who are not only willing to serve in office, but who have agreed to be here tonight to share their ideas and goals. So let us get started. Candidate Amato, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Hi, well, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters as well as Holman School Organization for hosting this event. I'm Ron Amato. I've lived in Naperville with my wife for about 22 years. I was born in Naperville at Edward Hospital and grew up in Lyles, so I'm basically consider myself a lifelong resident of the area. We have two students that have come up through District 203 schools. They're currently in high school and one in junior high. And look, the reason I'm running is we have great public schools in Naperville. It's one of the reasons why people move to the community. I've been very involved in the community. I'm also an attorney professionally and have some other skills that I think will really add value to the board. And I just want to step up and serve my community because I care about Naperville. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Amato. Candidate Gerke, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christine Gerke. I've lived in Naperville since 1998 and prior to that I was a student at North Central College. I share my home with two cats and two kids. My son and daughter attended District 203 K through 12 and they are now both in college. And I am now seeing firsthand how well our schools have prepared my students, my kids, to pursue very different majors at very different universities. It has been an honor to serve on the board since 2017. This role combines my love of education and public service. I believe every child should be welcomed and valued as a unique individual and I want each student to develop a love of learning and for them to find their own passions. I'm a consensus builder that looks at various viewpoints while always keeping students as my central focus.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly Black, your one-minute opening statement. Candidate Kelly Black, you might want to unmute yourself, please.
Sorry about that. My name is Melissa Kelly Black. I grew up in the area and my children attended Napier Elementary just like their grandmother did. I have been a proud and involved Naperville 203 parent since 2005. I'm aware of that the residents of Naperville 203 want a school district that provides high-quality education to all students. So our community is invested in our school district. Not only do we want high-quality outcomes, we want that a high-quality school district also provides high home values and gives us a desirable place to live. I want to celebrate our successes and then focus on problem-solving, the challenges today as we strive to improve and get better. I was a, I'm a former educator and a business owner and I believe that my knowledge and experience can help. The school board ensure that the school district delivers on the community's high educational expectations for all students.
Thank you. Candidate Kosminski, your opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for hosting this forum. I'm Joe Kosminski and I'm running for reelection to District 203 School Board. I have three kids in the district and I'm passionate about education. I'm a scientist and educator. I've been teaching physics at higher ed for 18 years and have been doing K-12 STEM outreach for even longer. As a scientist, I love to dig into the data and work on complex problems. And through my leadership roles at work in professional organizations and on the board, I have significant policy and budget experience. Serving on the school board is a way for me to give back using my professional skills and experience. During my first term, the district has seen, you know, a very strong academic rebound coming out of pandemic and has been widely recognized for things like its social emotional learning program or SEL program and equity work, always while stewarding taxpayer dollars responsibly. And I want to work to continue to ensure that students, that all students have a safe, welcoming learning environment with the necessary supports needed so that every student achieves success along the path that's right for them.
Thank you, Candidate Kosminski. Candidate Wagner, Wagner, your opening statement.
Yeah, my name is Gilbert Wagner. I'm new to the district. I've only lived in District 203 for two, for three years. We have a kindergartner at Kingsley right now. My in-laws, my wife's family is from Naperville, born and raised. I have eight years of school board experience in District 33 in West Chicago. I learned in District 33, by my time there, I was Board President, Board Vice President, served on SASS and Board of Control for six years. A lot of special education experience, a lot of hands-on experience with a totally diverse district than we are, we have in Naperville. I think that my experience will help with that. I'm also a blue-collar worker. I'm HVAC by trade. So I, I'm just a different perspective than some other people, some other candidates. Being during my time on the school board in West Chicago, we started early at childhood education, all the kindergarten and the model for the dual-language program that Naperville District 203 uses now.
Thank you. Candidate Gerke, we'll begin with you with the first question. What are the top three things voters should know about you which uniquely qualify you for this position?
So the first thing I mentioned in my opening statement and that is how this combines my love of public education and public service. It's a perfect union and it's, it's a, it's a great place, like a great place to operate in. The other thing voters should know is that I strive to take in as much data and, you know, viewpoints as possible before making any decisions. I feel I'm a very balanced person, even keeled temper. And I, I look to, to gain as much information as possible before making a decision. And then lastly, I, I am a champion of public education. It's a system that educated me, it educated my kids. I believe it can offer every student a path to success and I love that every student is welcomed and in our buildings and then we will help them pursue whatever it is that they want to do in their adult lives.
Thank you so much. Candidate Kelly Black, what are the top three things voters should know about you which uniquely qualify you for this position? Unmute, please.
Sorry. Number one, I have a bachelor's and master's degree in education. I'm a former educator. I have also participated in educational research across the globe for different organizations such as Cambridge University and the Jane Goodall Institute. I have attended seminars on education at Harvard, MIT, and Stanford. So I've kept up on best practices and research-based information about education. Second of all, I have kids whose needs have run the spectrum from gifted to special needs. So I have advocated for them throughout the time that I've advocated about them. It's given me a deeper understanding of how the school district attends to our students' needs and works with the families. I've also worked with experts in the community from Northwestern and the major hospitals in the city. And third, I guess I'm a born educator. I want to teach, learn, and connect the community and the school district together to meet the kids of all, meet the needs of all students.
Thank you. Candidate Kosminski, what are the top three things voters should know about you which uniquely qualify you for this position?
Thank you. I guess I could have saved those from my opening statement. There are several of them. But yeah, I'm an educator myself. I, I've been teaching physics for 18 years, working with very diverse student populations. I'm a scientist and have very strong data and analytical skills. And I love coming through the data and, you know, kind of really trying to understand what's going on in the school district. And then I'm very collaborative. I listen to my colleagues. I work well with my colleagues. I've worked on large international collaborations in science. So yeah, I, I'm willing to, you know, listen carefully, take in information and additional data and, you know, modify my, my opinions and, you know, as necessary, which is what we do in science.
Thank you. And Candidate Wagner, what are the top three things voters should know about you which uniquely qualify you for this position?
I, well, I said a couple of them already too. I think that the eight years served in a school district, in another school district is a, is a, is a big deal. Six years on the Board of SASS and Control, which was, was very enlightening and educational when it comes to special education. And my, I don't have an education background. I think that's a big benefit to school board, to have somebody on the school board who doesn't. No education. I mean, I'm not that old in education, but I don't, I never was a teacher, was an administrator. I have a, like I said, a blue-collar background. I work outside of the education field. I think that's a good benefit to, to a school district to bring a different perspective. I do, I've learned a long time ago, now you have to listen. I do listen and take in. I don't say a lot. I just listen more than I talk and try to make educated decision based on everybody's input and I want to work collaborative with everybody.
Thank you. And Candidate Amato, what are the top three things voters should know about you which uniquely qualify you for this position?
Sure. Thank you for the question. First of all, I've been very, very involved in the community. I think by anyone's standards, I've been very involved with an organization called Kids Matter over the last eight years or so. I've served on their executive board, so I've learned quite a bit about what's going on in the schools, including some of the issues surrounding mental health issues in our schools. I've also been involved in, in the Exchange Club in Naperville and also served on a, or served currently on a city board and commission. The firefighter pension fund board, we oversee a $200 million pension fund. Professionally, I'm an attorney. I think Tony Casey right now is the only current board member who's an attorney. He's coming off. I think being an attorney with the background in financial services allows me to help navigate through some of the issues that the board faces. I'm not an educator, but I, you know, I think I have a different set of skills that really will complement the existing board. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question will begin with Candidate Kelly Black. What do you consider to be the most important issues facing the Naperville School District 203 right now? And how would you propose to address them?
Okay. I think, I'm not muted. Okay, so the first number one issue is we have the teacher shortage, which means, or, or staff shortage. And what that means is we have students that are currently in our classrooms that don't have the staff available to provide those services. So I think that, you know, that should be, as we triage the issues within our school district, that needs to be a high priority. They've, the school district has taken some measures, but those measures have not filled those vacancies. We know that this is a national issue and it's going to get worse, so we need to be proactive about addressing it because the quality of education really depends on the people on the front line. Along, along with the teacher shortage, that affects and impacts all the other systems in our ability to function. So I guess that's primary and fundamental to the rest of the issues.
Thank you so much. Candidate Kosminski, the same question.
Thank you. Yeah, I do agree that the staffing shortage is a critical issue within the district right now. You know, I think there are a number of ways that the district is working to address it through things like Grow Your Own programs and career pathway endorsements on the, on diplomas. Melissa said a number of things that I agree with in her statement. So I'm also going to say that another big issue I think we need to look at is achievement gap. We have, the data is showing that even though the district as a whole has bounced back very strongly, there are still groups that have not bounced back as strongly. And we need to work to close those achievement gaps. And we've been doing that, you know, on the board already. And we need to continue to, you know, figure out where we are coming out of the pandemic and reallocate resources as necessary to support the students where needed.
Thank you. And Candidate Wagner.
I agree with this Black and Mr. Kosminski so far. See, the staff shortage is one of the biggest issues. We got to make our staff feel appreciated and show potential candidates why we're the best. I think mental health is also a big problem in our, in every district, everywhere, everywhere is a big problem. I think we need to reassess and make sure the SEL program is appropriate for everybody, is serving everybody it needs to serve. Make sure we have adequate staff of, of, of social workers, counselors, stuff like that. That's what's important. Achievement gap, we need to work on achievement gap like Joe was saying. Achievement gap between the groups that are not catching up as fast and a lot of that, some of that comes just because of mental health and being, being away for so long and two years out of school is, got to make sure everybody's back where they need to be and, and, and spend a lot of time on that.
Thank you. Candidate Amato.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with a lot of what's been said. It's tough to cover a lot of ground in a minute, but academic excellence, I think, needs to continue to be the top priority in the district. You know, that's not to say that we're not doing a good job, but there's definitely room for improvement. For example, the IAR readiness standards show that only about 60% of students are meeting readiness standards in math. You know, we're doing well versus other districts, but we need to, we need to do our best to improve and also work on closing the achievement gap like, like others have said. That's, that's a significant issue and we need to think creatively about how to address that, you know, in addition to what the board's doing now. Fiscal responsibility is something I'm concerned about as well. Making sure that resources are being deployed effectively. That's not to say that I'm someone who wants to come in and slash budgets because I'm not. But I do think, you know, we need to make sure when we're raising our tax levy by the 5% maximum amount, that we're doing all we can. And that's only two, sorry.
And Candidate Gerke.
I'm going to repeat what has, some of what has been said. For me, a top issue is the SEL and it's a positive issue in that having had that in place before the pandemic helped us through the pandemic with our students and then also helped us on the path of recovery that we have right now as we've gone back full-time in the past year and a half or so. We're, and that SEL program, we're seeing it pay dividends in, in our students recovering academically now that we're back. We still have achievement gaps to address, but having the SEL in place helps with that too. So that's the overarching thing that helps with our achievement gaps. It also helps with our students' mental health. And then I can't not say that I'm concerned about the teacher shortage. Growing our own is something that we're looking at now. How to, you know, encourage people to come into the profession is top of mind for me.
Thank you. Candidate Kosminski, how should the district address the increased mental health needs of our students at all levels?
Thank you for the question. That's a very important one. So I think there are several things that we need to do. Well, the first thing, we've rolled out to MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support, where schools and teachers are looking at students and kind of sharing student data across the school, across the, the social workers, the psychologists, the counselors, so that, you know, students can be looked at individually and the needs of the students can be addressed individually. So I think this rollout of the MTSS in the last couple of years is really going to help, you know, identify those mental health needs and support them much better. We've also partnered with, you know, the NEF, for example, with the RISE program to provide wraparound services to students and families for needs that go beyond what the school can provide.
Thank you. Candidate Wagner, the same question.
I agree, I agree with what Joe just said. I think the MTSS program is awesome. That's a great start. We had that in West Chicago, District 33. We do have to make sure that the assessments and the interventions we're doing are working. We have to make sure we have measured benchmarks, to make sure we meet those benchmarks, find out what each student needs, how, how do we help each student on their own individually? It's, it's easy to group students together, but it's hard to pull out one at a time and, and, and make that, that student feel comfortable and welcome in the schools and help with their mental health. I think that the outside partnerships are also very important with different organizations that can help with mental health. For full families, not just a student. It starts at home too. And we got to have that support for outside the school district.
Thank you. Candidate Amato.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, mental health is very important to me. It's a very important issue. I was on Kids Matters Board when they did a survey a while back of all seventh graders and sophomores in the district that raised some, you know, pretty concerning issues regarding stress and that sort of thing. So this is something that predates COVID. It's gotten worse during COVID. Due to these isolations, some students, you know, went to more, into more depression, things like that. So we need to continue to working to address that. At, at the school level, there are social workers, there are counselors, you know, people who can really serve as a safety net in the schools. But there are so many great resources in our community and I think we have to do a great job connecting families to organizations like 360 Youth Services, Samaritaria, NAMI de Page. You know, we need to be able to connect families to these groups so that they can get the additional support that's not being provided in the schools.
Thank you, Candidate Gerke.
So the mental health needs of our students, we have to first, you know, be sure to listen to our students and, and, you know, if they ask for help, make sure we can, we have the resources available. And that goes to, you know, providing resources in our buildings, making sure we have the proper staff to help our students. We have to certainly foster and grow the partnerships we have outside with other community groups. Joe mentioned RISE, you know, partnering with NEF to help our students with, the students and families with wraparound services. This is, this issue is a true exercise in collaboration. It's, it's, everybody has to be involved so that our kids can, you know, be healthy, feel safe and supported in addition to receiving the high-quality academic instruction that we provide.
And Candidate Kelly Black.
Hello. I, this is an issue that steered to me. I've done a lot of work with NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness and working with getting information into the schools, getting rid of the stigma of mental health issues. They work with first responders, but everyone has kind of talked about all the different approaches we can take, but we need to utilize these organizations that specialize in providing resources to train our staff and to provide supports for our students. Another issue we have to look at is, you know, what, what's the root cause of some of the stress? For example, if we have achievement gaps, that produces more stress on students, which is going to compound the already existing issues. So a lot of it is, like I said, look at the root issues, provide supports, professional development so we can, the staff knows, you know, what signs to look for in the students. So we can not be reactionary, but we can be proactive in our approaches.
Thank you. Candidate Wagner, how can the Board of Education best communicate with and be accessible to the community?
Sorry. That's a good question. I think that the Board of Education needs to be welcoming. And anytime there's any kind of issue or parent involvement, parent involvement is very important. Parents should always be involved in their kid's education, to be involved in any kind of major decision a board makes. You should have forums at the different schools. You should have forums at, at the different schools for issues that come up. I know there's twenty-five buildings, so that would be twenty-five forums. But you got to get everybody involved as much as you can. We've got to be welcoming. And you, and, and respect their time and you need to listen. I think the biggest thing is, is that a lot of people listen to respond and people don't listen to understand. If you listen to understand, then, then, then that goes a long way. And if you just sit there and listen to respond very quickly and you're not going to get the, the parents involved. You got to show respect and that you care about what they're saying.
Thank you. Candidate, your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I, I, you know, I agree with a lot of what Gil said. Parents need to be welcoming or, or board members rather need to be welcoming. They, they need to listen to all parents, you know, from different sides of the, of the aisle, so to speak. And, and they need to be available in, in meeting, out meeting with folks in the community. You know, I think due to the Open Meetings Act, it might be difficult for the board to like go out and meet with parents as, as a group. You know, in, informally, but there's, you know, there's nothing that prevents individual board members from, from doing that or to going. And, and they do do that, you know, with the home and school organizations and, and that, but you know, maybe there's more that can be done as far as, you know, meeting with groups of parents for coffee and that sort of thing to, to discuss their, their concerns. You know, if I get elected, my, you know, my, my door is always open, so to speak. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to, to hear anyone out who has concerns or, or that sort of thing. So it's really just about keeping those lines of communication open.
Thank you. Candidate Kirky.
So as, as a, as a board member, I can say that community engagement is extremely important. In my opening statement, I had said that I, I look at very, you know, I listen to and I look to different viewpoints before I make any decisions and community engagement is one of them. As a board member, each year we sit on two to three committees. There's Student Advisory Group now that we rotate in as board members. There's district leadership teams that we rotate in to listen to with different leaders in our district. We sit on diversity, equity, inclusion committees. We hosted forums and, you know, we've had different online engagements through like thought exchange, for example. Email, we're always accessible by email at the grocery store. It's not uncommon to talk with folks when we're out and about in, you know, our, our everyday life. So for me, it's important to engage with the community because that's where you hear thoughts and concerns and my door is always open to that.
And candidate Kelly Black.
I think everything that the other candidates have mentioned are, are very important and valid points, you know, that community engagement. I think it's important to, to develop that relationship also with the staff, the community. So we see those issues from all different perspectives and we're constantly aware of what's going on in the district. I think that another important aspect of this is to develop those relationships in a way that is has transparency and accountability, that we're listening to them. We're available, but that we also provide the information to the public that they want to know, that it doesn't appear as if we're not working, we're working, we're not involving them in all the steps in the entire process.
Candidate Kuzminsky.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, community engagement is really important. You know, we, we represent the community, we represent our constituents and, you know, you know, listening to the community is one of the responsibilities of a, a board member. Christine went through a, a really good list of a lot of the things that the board does. I'm going to add one more to that and that's the Adopt a School program that we have, where each board member has three to four schools that are, are kind of the, the ones that they, you know, go to and communicate with every year. So we go to home and school meetings. We, this, this year we've instituted a visit with the superintendent where the board member and superintendent are available to teachers, staff, to the home and school, to parents during that, during that time. So that, that's another way to engage with the board in addition to emails and forums and, and committees and, and other things that Christine mentioned.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Amado. What is the role of schools in teaching children about topics outside the core curriculum?
Well, I mean, that's a great question. I mean, first and foremost, I, I think the school's primary role is to provide an education in the core curriculum subjects. Math, science, English, language arts, social studies. That sort of thing, you know, that, that's why students, you know, succeed in life ultimately. It is because they receive a kind of a core education in those fundamental areas. But, you know, obviously, you know, the schools have moved into some other areas that are very important and, and, you know, S E L being the primary one. And I, you know, I do think that's important. I, I think it's important to teach students life skills, how to get along with people, self-awareness. You know, that sort of thing. And, and I think it's good that the district is, is doing more of that and that schools in, in general are doing more of that because that also helps students succeed in life. You know, in addition to learning about the, kind of the nuts and bolts of the academic stuff.
Candidate Kirky, your response?
I think all, I think schools are, of course, have to teach a core curriculum. All students should have that foundation. But I, I do believe that it's important that kids learn, as Ron said, about, you know, how to interact with their world, how to interact with people with different viewpoints, different experiences. You know, and the most important part is that we, anything that's taught in schools in, in any subject area is done age appropriately. It's, it's just important to me that kids have a very well-rounded education, that they have a solid foundation and that they also are critical thinkers and that they can go out into the world with the ability to engage with people productively.
And candidate Kelly Black.
I agree with a lot what the other candidates have said. I do think that we do have the common core curriculum. But outside of that, I think that we're looking for, I mean, we used to say in college, it's a liberal arts education. As we want well-rounded individuals. I also think that we can't overlook the importance of some of these other avenues to our students. You know, we talk about mental health. Well, if you're in music or arts or you're participating in some type of activity or class, it's your passion. I think that helps balance you. I think it also shows, you know, music, some of those other courses are go, go hand in hand with the academics. So again, I think we want to have balanced students, mentally balanced students. So we provide them a lot of experiences to express themselves and achieve.
Candidate Kuzminsky.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with what many of the candidates have said already. S E L is particularly important, learning about students with, from other backgrounds and forming relationships with students from other backgrounds and developing those interpersonal skills is critical. And that's something that's transferable into the workforce, working on very diverse teams. Another thing that I, I think is important that hasn't been highlighted yet are those, you know, not, not everybody's going to go to college. So, you know, schools play a role in, in providing opportunities for vocational skills and preparing students for the workforce. So it's, you know, college and career readiness, not, not just college readiness. So providing some of those career pathways. There, there are specific endorsements now that the school, the district offers on diplomas in things like education and various other areas.
And candidate Wagner.
I, I agree with everything which is said, so I would just say ditto. No, I was kidding. So I think that the core curriculum has to be done first. As long as, anything outside of core curriculum, as long as it matches the strategic goal of the district and district goals. It's important. We want to, we want to have students that graduate in already career in college ready. I, like I said, I'm from the trade, so I, I, I'm, I support that. We should be able to make sure our, if our kids don't want to go to college, you should be able to go to, go to get a job. We should be good stewards to the community. That's what's important. We're, we're not just teaching kids how to multiply in, in physics and, and how to read. We're teaching them how to be people and how to be adults. How to interact with other people, how to, how to learn how to deal with conflict that comes out in every day, you know, you, you're going to, you're going to work with people you don't like. You have to learn how to get along with everybody and learn how to listen, be good stewards to the community.
The next question will begin with candidate Kirky. What, if any, changes are needed in the comprehensive equity plan?
I, I, I do like the comprehensive equity plan that we have in place. I think at this point, we need to keep, you know, faithfully implementing it. You know, that plan to me is important because, like I, I've said earlier, it's, it's meeting every student where they're at and it's valuing every student and making sure that we recognize them as a unique individual. And we're here for them, you know, again, to find their, their path and to support them in the things that they want to do. So right now, I'm, I'm, I want to see it implemented as faithfully as possible.
And candidate Kelly Black, what if any changes are needed in the comprehensive equity plan?
I think what we need to do in general is take the approach of, when we implement these plans, we want to be careful that we monitor the progress to make sure that each student is benefiting from the program so we can review. You know, are we achieving the outcomes we want for each student? How could, what adjustments can we make so that we can, you know, improve the situation for this individual student? And to just always be striving to do better and use that data and research-based approaches to make, and to make sure that we're having the outcomes we want.
And candidate Kuzminsky, what if any changes are needed in the comprehensive equity plan?
Yeah, I, I very much support the comprehensive equity plan as it currently stands. I, I think it's still early to make any major changes. You know, we're, we're still rolling out elements of that comprehensive equity plan, still working on, on some of the elements such as hiring, you know, we're, we're, we're doing a good job on hiring a diverse staff and, and teachers in the district, making progress on some of the goals. And I think continuing to measure and monitor as we roll out, it is important to ensure that we're putting the resources in the right places and you know, making tweaks as, as we identify them. But it's still fairly early in the implementation and I, I'm not ready to kind of blow anything up yet.
And candidate Wagner, the same question.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, it's still pretty early in it. I think that we have to just stay on top of it. Stay on top of results, assessments, make sure the students are growing. And it's working the way that, that's planned, right? And you have to be ready to make small adjustments as you go. You can't, you can't turn the Titanic fast. It has, it takes slow, slow, slow turns, slow moves to, to move the direction you're looking for. So you have to be ready to adjust based off assessments and make sure that each student is getting what they need. And the plan is working the way you want it to. Until you have any, until you have enough data points, you really can't make any changes to it.
And candidate Amado.
Yeah, I don't know that I recommend any specific changes to it. I, you know, certainly if the administration were to suggest changes and recommend that to the board, I'd, I'd be willing to listen with an open mind to, to anything that was, that was presented. You know, when you get into the, kind of the goals of the plan, like others have said, I mean, I think you need to be looking kind of track, tracking positive outcomes and, you know, again, it goes back to the achievement gap as well where, you know, ultimately, we want to make sure all students are getting the supports that they need so that they can learn and, and, and be successful. And, you know, that, that's a big part of it and I think we need to continue to focus down that path. You know, one thing I would quickly mention too is just, you know, continuing to focus on parent engagement. I went to an event that we could go Sunday, the success organization put on. Candidly, I really was not familiar with that group. But I thought it was an excellent event and it's things like that that can make all students, I think, feel welcome at schools.
Thank you. The next question is, what do you see as the board's role in addressing issues of student behavior and discipline? And we'll begin with candidate Kelly Black.
Well, we're talking about a teacher shortage and retaining teachers. So I think that this also comes into, this is one of the factors that factors in. Our teachers were having more behavior problems, but we have more stress, stress on our students. So all of these issues are interconnected and we have to work from all different angles to address them. I think that the board needs to support and kids need to be accountable. I've seen, from my own experience, I've seen my, my son get into trouble. And the school district called me and I think as a parent, you need to work with the school district and reinforce them. However, the school district, when I asked what the response was going to be, there really wasn't, they weren't going to give him a referral or detention. So I said, listen, we need to work together, that we need to have consequences for behavior. So I think that that's something that we could do a little better with is, you know, having strict standards and having consequences.
Candidate Kuzminsky.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, I think there, there are a few things that, you know, need to be done to, to address this. I, I think, yeah, some of the staffing issues are, are certainly there. And I think, yeah, S E L is, it can help to, you know, a, address the, the provide methods for conflict resolution between the students and hopefully prevent some of these behaviors from occurring in, in the first place. In terms of, you know, when they do occur, you know, having the, the support there for, for the students and providing restorative justice methods, I think is very important. And, you know, helping the students, you know, see, you know, what, what, what was wrong, what, what they did wrong and you know, learn from that and not do it.
Candidate Wagner, what do you see as the board's role in addressing issues of student behavior and discipline?
So the board's role I see is to set policy and have the programs in place to help with conflict resolution, like Joe was saying. And then have the, the, the policy for consequences and what happens to you if you get in trouble. But as, as far as the day to day, the board is not involved with that at all. That's up to the administration and this principles of each school building to take care of. But I think that the school board needs to provide the support to the students and find out, you know, what's going on and, and, and back to the mental health. And find out if, if it's coming from other, other areas and just of just being upset and what, what's causing it conflict, and teach conflict resolution, which is really important.
And did it Amado?
Yeah, I agree again, you know, with what, a lot of what's been said. I, I think, you know, obviously there are rules and people, people have to follow rules or there, there are going to be consequences. But, you know, the board's obviously not necessarily involved in the day-to-day management of, of the, the different schools. But, you know, ultimately what we need to really kind of focus on is getting kind of the root cause of what, what's, you know, causing some of these behaviors and, you know, whether it's mental health issues or, you know, situations where other students are bullying others or cyberbullying. You know, these are all situations that need to be taken seriously and the board needs to make sure that the policies that are in place are, are adequate. Thank you.
And candidate Kirky.
So from the day-to-day aspect, the board needs to listen to the administration and then, you know, listen to what recommendations they may have as far as how we can re, we can allocate resources to buildings so that kids are getting the supports that they need. Again, this is where the S E L component comes into play, you know, modeling, teaching kids what healthy relationships look like, you know, how to how to navigate any kind of differences, navigate, you know, just a difference of opinion. And, and that, that all, you know, occurs mostly at the building level. But the board can make sure the resources are in place to help with that, that process as the, the kids, you know, go, you know, just, they have to learn. You know, there's a learning process that all kids have and that's where the resources become really important. And I think the restorative justice goes a long way too in learning how to resolve conflict between you and another person.
Well, candidates, this is going to be our last question. Sadly, our time is growing to a close. So we'll begin with candidate Kuzminski. And the question is, what if any sustainability green initiatives do you support or recommend for the district?
Yeah, I, I think there are several. So the first thing is just as we're going about doing the routine maintenance and upkeep, especially since we have some aging infrastructure, making sure that we're making our buildings as energy efficient as possible. I think that can save money, you know, very quickly at, and very low cost. We've done other initiatives in trying to, for example, add electric vehicles to the driver's ed fleet. Four of those are in place now. And we've been working to pilot electric buses as well. We in fact wrote a resolution that we submitted to IASB to, you know, support increased funding for electric bus programs in schools and, and other zero emission bus programs within the schools. So I'd also like to see, you know, other energy, alternative energy sources as well. Thank you.
And candidate Wagner.
Yeah, I, I think they, everybody needs to be concerned about carbon footprint and being green, more green. I think there's lots of ways to do it. I think solar energy is a good idea. I think wind energy is a good idea. I, I agree with Joe. I think we need to keep your upkeep of your buildings. So your 50-year plan has to be up to date. But you have to be careful how energy tight we make a building because indoor air quality will suffer. And then student learning really changes when you have poor indoor air quality in a home, in a building. It's proven. So you have to be careful how energy tight you make a, make a building. But there's ways to make it energy tight and safe and, and still a good learning environment. So anyways, new, the carbon neutral buses is a great idea too.
Candidate Amato.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think sustainability is important. I mean, I, I think, you know, it conserves resources and protects the environment. And I think if it's, if it's done wisely, it can also result in cost savings, you know, which is a win-win for everyone. So certainly, I mean, the first step is making sure our facilities are as energy efficient as, as they can be. You know, I'll be candid, I'm not an expert in this area, but I'm, I'm willing to, you know, listen to any initiatives that the, that come before the board with, with an open mind. I, I do think, you know, on some of these things that have been mentioned, the devil's in the details and you kind of have to look at a cost benefit analysis on some of this. I read a little bit about the electric buses and it sounds like those buses are about $500,000 apiece, which, you know, substantially more expensive than a, a regular school bus. So I think, you know, you, you need to look at all those details. But, you know, I'm, I'm willing to consider, you know, any of this with an open mind. Thank you.
Candidate Gurkey.
So this is, I know Joe didn't have nearly enough time to talk about this one. But I will, I will hopefully continue where he left off. I will say I'm very proud of our staff for getting those electric vehicles in our driver's ed program. That was huge. The one thing that we're trying to do as far as expanding what we have for sustainability is looking for grants. Joe mentioned the resolution that we wrote and that's moving further in Springfield. You know, again, it's about looking at our infrastructure. How can we improve as we're making improvements? How can we make it more sustainable with just our regular, you know, yearly, you know, fixing things up process? You know, a lot of our buildings, the kids, there's gardens out there. So the kids are learning, you know, planting things, you know, how to make it a much, you know, they're beautifying their schools, but in the meantime, they're helping the environment. So again, that's a, everybody can contribute aspect.
And candidate Kelly Black.
All right. I think that the other candidates had wonderful ideas and I agree with them. I think as we do updates on the infrastructure, we need to make sure that we're energy efficient. We should be always trying to look at other possible solutions like solar. Along with, you know, that could be energy efficient and be cost-effective. The grants are a great way to promote and promote the sustainability. And I like the idea of even involving the students and then tie it into the education. And we want to make sure that, you know, the practices within our classrooms in our schools, what can we do to improve that? And again, these are all educational opportunities for our students to become involved in.
Thank you. Well, it's time now for closing statements. So we'll begin with candidate Wagner. You have one minute for your closing statement.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters in Naperville and the Home and School Association for having us all together. I have a lot of respect for everybody in this room, in the chat room here or group, whatever you want to call this. Just, I want to say that all of us are in it for the same reasons. We all want to help, help education, make our kids, our district the best it can be. So whether you vote for me or someone else, just make sure you vote on April 4th.
Candidate Amato.
Yeah, thank you. And, and thank you for the opportunity tonight to, to speak with you all. This has been nice. You know, I'll just say again, you know, I, I have experience giving back to the community. You know, as far as my involvement in the nonprofit community and, and being involved with organizations that directly help, help kids. And I think, you know, my familiarity with people in the community and the nonprofits, you know, really is something that would be beneficial on the board. But, you know, really, I think my professional background is, is something that sets me a little bit apart from the people that currently are on the board. You know, as I mentioned, I'm an attorney. I've been involved in financial services related litigation for about 23 years. I've worked in the financial services industry. You know, our board has a $300 million, our district has a $300 million budget. That budget's going to be, need, need to be approved within three to four months after the election. And, you know, I think given my background, I, I'm a serious candidate who can add value. Thank you.
Candidate Gurkey, your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and General Home and School for hosting this forum. I'm always appreciative of events that allow voters to learn more about the candidates on their ballot. As a, a candidate now and as a school, a school board member also, I can say I am completely committed to each student's success by meeting them where they're at and providing them with effective and equitable resources and educating them to enter a world that is constantly evolving. I'm asking for your continued trust and support and I promise to continue serving our district with a balanced and holistic perspective. Please vote on April 4th for me, Christine Gurkey. And you can learn more about me on Facebook or my website, Gurkey4Naperville, two oh three, Gurkey4Naperville.com. And thank you once again for having us tonight.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly Black.
Thank you for having us all here and giving us an opportunity to speak to the voters. And, and thank you for your organization's hard work since 1920 of informing voters and encouraging people to vote. So I appreciate that. Vote local, it's important. I want to just make sure that we continue to celebrate the successes and we work to, you know, keep pushing and striving to achieve more and to problem solve, that we celebrate our successes, but we also go, okay, how are we going to problem solve this? We monitor it, we watch it and we, and we have deadlines and we provide timely positive outcomes. And again, I go back to those urgent needs of, we need to take care, care of those staffing shortages because they prevent us, we can have the best policies and practices, but if we don't have the staff there, those students are in those classrooms and their needs are not being met. And that goes back to student, the gap, achievement gaps too. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kuzminski, your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Home and School for hosting this forum. I spend an honor to serve on the school board and I hope I can continue to contribute in this role. I'll work with my colleagues in the district to provide all students a top-quality education in a safe, supportive and welcoming learning environment so that they'll, everyone will achieve success. And I'll continue to steward resources responsibly, looking for ways to be more sustainable and reduce the district's carbon footprint and reduce energy costs per student through infrastructure improvements. I'm proud of what District 203 has accomplished and the recognition that is received over the last four years with, for SCL work, equity work and student academic achievement. The district really has outstanding teachers, staff and administrators who we have to retain. And, and we've had great support by the current board for the initiatives in the district. And I, I hope that you will vote for me and my colleague on April 4th or before.
Thank you. On behalf of the community, let me thank you for being with us here tonight. Our democracy thrives when we are all engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered, to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on election day. We hope each and every one of you will vote and inspire your family and friends and neighbors to do the same. Early voting does begin on March 20th at select locations. Additional information on how and when to vote can be found at vote411.org and the Naperville League of Women Voters website and social media. Recording of this forum for District 203 School Board candidates can be found at the Naperville League of Women Voters YouTube channel. Thank you for joining us. Thank you again to the candidates and good night.